That's probably a clearer picture of where the Jeep actually ended up.
What trail is this? Oh, that's just nice.
Kind of ended up on its side.
Kind of. It is completely on its side.
They did like three or four events in Smoky Mountain. And the video team went down and they were doing some stuff with Power Nation and then they.
Yeah, that's great. I have a friend who lives in Pennsylvania. He used to be pretty seriously involved in off-road. He just came to like Moab and he's done that crazy stuff and I. You have?
Rental.
It arose with the full waiver and. Well, no.
There was your certain trails we weren't allowed to go on.
Okay.
So, so the first obstacle I did, I realized this, but he says you're going down. Because you will be completely like this. He says when your front wheels hit the ground, because you're gonna brake. And he's gonna slide. When your front wheels hit, you don't release the brakes to end up on your roof.
Yeah.
So as soon as the front wheels hit and you roll out.
Oh.
He says, you know, I kept telling you go this way. You were as close to falling off a cliff.
Oh, you had a guy? Was it a guy with you?
There's always guys. There's always people telling you which way to go.
Yeah. Yeah.
We went up one, but they're the man of the obstacle. And it stopped. He wouldn't go any further there. And he says, your pockets include. The button was in there. The lockers did it. I had to back down this entire obstacle.
Oh, no. Yeah, I've never done anything.
You've never been in a Jeep with a death wobble?
No, I've seen videos.
That Jeep went into the death wall. You need to drive it back a little time.
Yeah.
It'll shake your teeth out.
So the video that my buddy was showing me is they, I forget how fast they were, but they just, they put a two by four. They're driving in a parking lot. And they opened the closure or something. And they hit the two by four. One wheel is not gonna, I mean, they had cameras under the car. It was, it looked like they were just casting going down the lake. That's scary. Yeah, the only off-roading I ever did in my Jeep. And I called it off-road.
It was a good, good way.
Drove off the parking lot.
It's such a.
And so it's a really, really shallow ramp out here. So I have to walk by the way. So Katie's never been there. She's out of the boat. And so this year she came over to put the mast up on the boat. She's looking at me a little funny. She's putting waiters on to get in the Jeep. And like you can just see like she's processing like what's about to happen. And I'm backing into the lake and her jaw is on the floor. And I'm getting out of the Jeep. It weighs much to go walking on the road. It's just like. Yeah, that was a good time. I saw the look on her face. He was more than nice and warm. I think the water was up. It was up to the axle. Or I guess. I was particularly.
I, I just didn't make sense. So I was like, I don't.
Do you, are you, you see the boat sales group on Facebook? No. Really. I love the, the. Yeah, and it's like you see these people who go out and so my parents had a speed. Oh, my dad, sort of fatal health wise. We ended up selling it. I sold it for. And this guy was, was in 2020. This guy was all excited. He's like, oh, I've never had a boat before. I can't wait to take this out of my gear. And I'm like, listen. It's okay. I'll, I'll do my best.
That's on me. You're done. Good, buddy. You're done. Good. Absolutely.
After the boss's leave, parents. Well, that turn around after all the way around.
Almost.
Yeah.
They are almost.
Down everywhere.
That's true.
Actually, we're getting our second pack set tomorrow.
I remember when I watched.
I guess that just starts to show. Or you should mark it. You should mark it. You have to. But it's gonna do it. But we have to document it. So like if you're building up on that.
Nothing. Don't worry about it. Survey.
Even though it's construction, we have to have some type of plan document to show you.
Make sure I'm not doing the prayer. Jamie's gonna do the prayer.
It happens pretty much. You'll check that box.
It's a little. It'll be on the next survey in 2025. David McLeister in person.
Yeah.
2023.
By the way, thank you for.
Well, we call them.
Well, we're, we're. We're making some progress. By the way, I began.
Oh, they're in the front there.
How are you doing?
I'm okay, Arias.
Good.
Is it the news?
It's the agenda.
The agenda.
Hi, Ben.
We have time.
We'll be good. Yeah, really.
Oh, sorry. Not much. Considering my husband's account for maybe yet, I figured I'd at least see how it all works before I start potentially causing it. Oh, I have a lot of stuff. I broke my. Last.
Do you realize that's not on the agenda?
Uh, this is one night we can speak.
It's not.
It said it's the second and the fourth of each month. This is the second.
This is the second.
It's, this, tonight is not public speech.
Tonight is public speech.
It's public speech for Agenda.
Oh, gotcha, gotcha. Okay, that's fine. I just didn't want you to be caught off guard when they offer people to speak and pool isn't on the agenda. So it's not. It was a change week.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. We're happy to talk to you. I just don't want you to be upset when you're. Okay, okay, great.
Didn't make enough copies. Yeah, I guess not. Well, I also think at least you see how it works. So then if you want something on the agenda, then you can call ahead. Actually, you can put on the agenda. And it's not a help. Two weeks after that, she's gonna say, what I want to talk about isn't on the agenda. How do I get it on the agenda? Yeah.
Okay, well, good.
Certainly.
But yeah, so she's talking about rental waste and policy. And that kind of relates to the. I don't think, amended, amended, I don't know what to say, rental waste and policy. But I don't understand what that is. So I think you're a lot familiar with it. And then you're listening and finding out how it all works. That's what we're doing. And then it does come to ask. I realize what I want to talk about on the agenda. How do I get it on the agenda?
Good luck. I tried. Everybody's mailbox was full.
Wow.
You can call and their mailbox is full. Call City Hall. Call. We'll call you back. Leave your number.
Call our council.
Tried. Mailbox full.
Yeah, well.
Oh, I, I love the topic.
Well, I, from now on, we may have to just call and find out whether it's available.
Oh, good. I don't worry.
Well, then I think we start posting. Like, I don't want to bother someone on their cell phone, but if it takes getting answers, I might just start. Yeah, exactly.
Five. Five. I don't think they use it for anything else right now.
Pretty light. They trust somebody to get this all set up.
Yeah.
Someone who's probably trying to get it off them is giving that.
I've never been in here, so.
Make sure they don't accidentally turn it on instead of off.
Oh, I always get. I guess I did. See, they did all this, their section, all the time. On the square. Oh, yes. I didn't see anything.
Speaking tonight, Chuck? Probably, right? You don't always.
Oh, because I did see it. I just thought that. So you can have it up there.
Stuff is on our way.
Not only does my husband have to, now my dad has to. Yeah, that's eight. So. Yeah, my niece says it never went away. It's been out there all this time.
Oh, yeah. No, no, I thought it would.
And I'll call to order the committee of a whole meeting on September 11th, 2023. The time is 7:01 PM. Ben, would you please follow the rule? Number Orr?
Here.
Number Holt?
Here.
Number Stryer?
Here.
Number Warren?
Here.
Number McLeister?
Here.
Number Lyric?
Here.
And member Matheny?
Here.
Seven present. All right, let's start off with community and economic development.
Yeah. Thank you, Matt. We have one item for consideration this evening. And that is a shared development agreement with Jackson Township. Jackson and the city have a common challenge. And that is both of us are mature communities, relatively mature communities with land use patterns that are well established. Jackson needs capital investment to support its services. That is its only source of, substantial source of revenue. And it needs to develop and redevelop its properties. We need jobs. That's what pays for our services. Both Jackson Township and the administration. And your chairman have concluded that a partnership is the best way to meet the mutual challenge. If we can work together, we can improve the odds of winning major projects. And more importantly, executing on those projects. So we don't have long procedural issues that tie up the shovels that break the ground. I want to say at the onset, I'm gonna turn this over to Patrick in a minute. And for very, very practical reasons that will soon be shared with you, that I wholeheartedly support this agreement. It reflects a huge amount of effort on behalf of the administration, Patrick, our lawyers at Krugliak in drafting this agreement. I think all of you have reviewed it. I will tell you that from my experience, I think it's pretty tight. It's pretty good. And again, it lays the foundation for mutual collaboration, which is exactly what we want. So Patrick, I'm gonna turn it over to you.
Thank you. I'm gonna go to the podium. It looks like we'll all be able to follow along with. And if there's ever any doubt as to where we are, I now have a pointer. So I can point to. So yes, what I'd like to say just kind of as background is that this has been a process that this particular agreement's been in development stages for probably about six months or so. We've been working on this. It started with just establishing some guiding principles. Considerations that North Canton was concerned with, considerations that Jackson Township was. And then spending some time negotiating with my counterpart, fiscal officer in Jackson Township, Randy Gonzalez, to kind of come up with what we think are a pretty strong partnership agreement that will really put the best interests of each community first and foremost. So first slide of the UBS agreement basis. Now, mind you, the, you know, general guideline principles that both sides had put together, it was probably two pages. And then the lawyers get involved and it's 20 pages. So lawyers on our side, lawyers on their side. But first, we would say that it's, might be a little bit difficult to see from this map, but that what appears to be like a knife edge on the side of the slide over here. See, I was just looking for an opportunity. So this here is Whipple Road. It's here like this, all the way up to Apple Grove. And right just below here where Whipple intersects with Wise. This is Wise Avenue. Back in the day, that used to be called Old Whipple Road. It was Whipple Road until they expanded Whipple Road. And then they had to rename it. So they renamed it Wise. And that goes up to Apple Grove. So what we're talking about, when we talk about this agreement, are the properties that are located in this area. And we should say that, you know, it, it shouldn't go without saying, that's why I think I should say it, that, you know, this effort started really, I think the first Coray was trying to get something going was when Mayor Wilder was first elected. So I think one of the first things that he did was pay a visit to Jackson Township to talk about how can we work together? How can we establish some type of professional, you know, harmonious working relationship? And so that kind of got the ball rolling with that until we're culminating here. But it's really, you know, without him here, this really wouldn't have been possible. So North Canton and Jackson agree to mutually develop or redevelop vacant and underutilized land in this agreed area. Now, if you are aware that the CIC and the city, we have acquired approximately 18 acres in this area that we would like to see redeveloped into something meaningful. The tax revenue and the provision of services will be shared. That's why we call it a shared development agreement. This is not a jet. North Canton will voluntarily annex the applicable parcels. Of course, as you know, with the annexation, first of all, a parcel has to be contiguous to the city. So that's important. And through this area and the effort that we're taking, we may become contiguous to more parcels within the designated area. And as such, then those parcels will be contiguous and could be subjected to voluntarily annexing in. Development opportunities and proposals will be evaluated and approved by both entities. So what's important as we go through this is to make sure that, that what gets developed, that that land is, you know, principally controlled by the city. We know that pretty much, you know, any building that gets built, the property taxes, whether it's, you know, a grocery store, whether it's a warehouse, whether it's a hotel, whatever it would be, a lot of property tax revenue will come from that. And with the agreement that we have, as we'll get into, that that's important to Jackson Township. It's not so important to us. With those piercing eyes. What is important to us is income tax revenue. And so we don't want a warehouse there. It doesn't bring any income tax revenue to us. So what we're looking for, I think, as we move forward with redevelopment in this area are jobs that are fairly dense and provide a significant portion of income tax revenue to the city. Next slide. North Canton will not conduct or engage in any hostile annexations. Annexation laws have changed. Whether we come to accept it or not, the opportunity for mass annexations existed decades and decades ago before the laws were changed. And as such, we think that it makes more sense to eliminate this as a bone of contention in order to get Jackson Township to participate with us in the redevelopment. North Canton will not annex any existing Jackson Township business unless requested by the business in the zone. Jackson will not oppose any voluntary annexation initiated by the city or private petitioners. So if somebody wants to come in, they see the value of belonging to the city, they feel there's a value proposition there. They will not be, they will not be opposed. And it's important to note that, you know, in the past with the legal challenges that come before an annexation, that such an annexation, you know, could drag on for years. And just involve a lot of legal costs that make it hardly worth annexing the land. For any voluntary annexation, the land will remain in Jackson Township and will not become part of North Canton's Hoover Township. That will enable Jackson Township to continue to collect the property tax revenues on any of the land that would be brought into the city. But it is important to note. But it is important to note that it will be brought into the city. Next slide. Taxation. Can you zoom this back so you can see it better?
Thank you.
You're welcome. You still hear me? Okay. Taxation. Income tax will be levied by North Canton at the normal city rate, including any future increases approved by voters. 100% of such income taxes will be retained by the city. Property tax will be levied by Jackson Township at the normal township rate, including any future increases. 100% of such property taxes will be retained by the township. And for those that don't, you know, know, the townships do not have income taxes. They can't levy any income tax. So where they get their operating revenue to run their business is through property taxes. Their property taxes are higher overall in Jackson than they are in North Canton because we have more of a diversified income stream through income tax with property tax. Next, providing services. So when we talk about a shared development agreement, what's important to us is not only that we both have an opportunity to prosper under this relationship, but it isn't always about revenue. It's also about expenses. And in a typical annexation, where we would annex the parcel in without a shared development agreement, all of the services that are provided to that parcel, to that property, to that business, to that resident, are costs that would be borne by the city. That's important to keep in mind. So in this agreement, we're saying that if Jackson Township is going to retain the property taxes, then we've negotiated that the following governmental services will be provided by Jackson Township. All police services, fire, EMS, street maintenance and repair, storm sewer, and sanitary sewer. Police, fire, EMS, street maintenance and repair, storm sewer, sanitary sewer. North Canton, what we would like to maintain control over would be water, building and permits, zoning, property code enforcement, fire code enforcement, and any other service not reserved by this agreement for the township. Why those things for North Canton? Well, in our mind, and we think that both sides are really enthused about this, is that by controlling the building and permits, the zoning, property code enforcement, fire code enforcement, we're controlling the nature of the project that's going to go there. And that's important because if we gave, if we give up the nature of what goes in on the land, we could end up with a warehouse that doesn't generate income tax to us. So that's why it's important that we do that. One, two, we know that throughout Ohio, that, you know, the townships don't have these various departments. They use the county services for building and permits and the like. So we think that we can, this is one of the advantages that North Canton has. I believe with our contract through SafeBill and how we've really turned around the building and permitting process, and we think that this will work well in that area. Application of laws. Criminal, civil, and traffic cases originating in the area, in that map, that knife-shaped map, shall remain under the jurisdiction of the Maslin Municipal Court. So for those of you that knew the primer, county is divided up into three different municipal court jurisdictions. The Alliance Municipal Court, which covers the eastern part of the county, the Canton Municipal Court, which covers us and the central part of the county, and the Maslin Municipal Court, which covers the western part of the county, including Jackson Township. So any criminal, civil, or traffic cases that come as a result of that, need to go to Maslin Municipal Court. And since they're going to be the police agency that's going to maintain the laws over there, it makes sense that they go to that and not have our police be responsible for issuing citations over there because we're familiar with how things work in the Canton Municipal Court. That's where we drive our ticketed cases to and not the procedures that may occur over to Maslin. City ordinances shall apply within the area excluding what Jackson Township has agreed to be responsible for. Jackson Township police shall enforce all criminal and traffic laws. And the North Canton code enforcement shall enforce all building, zoning, property maintenance, and business regulation laws. And we do believe that our code enforcement is much stricter, not only in this application, but in the letter of what the law says. Development standards. So, okay, now we're going to do this and we're going to try to develop or redevelop these underutilized or unused parcels. What are our standards? And it would, I think, one of the things that struck a chord with Jackson is that we reviewed with them the process that we went through in the standards on the Meyer of development. So, you know, when this, when the mayor launched the land bank program, right after you got, came into office in late 19, early 20, as we decided to go down that process, we developed standards of saying what it is that we're looking for, what we will accept, what we won't accept, and working our way through that so that whatever deal came to us, we had to be able to check off the majority of these boxes on these standards. And that's what we're talking about here. So North Canton and Jackson will work together to develop the area, including discussing all opportunities for both financial and aesthetic considerations. This is the gateway to North Canton. We want to make sure that whatever's developed there reflects that gateway to North Canton. North Canton will act as the lead agent on the development of vacant land within the area. So since we're want to dictate the type of development that occurs there because we need the income tax that supports that development, we're going to run lead on that. And that would include in grant applications, economic development incentives that we could apply to through other state agencies that will run lead, but they will support. The township will agree not to permit city-identified development opportunities to be located elsewhere in Jackson Township. So if I were to, in my role as handling the economic development for the city, be aware of a new situation for development that might fit that location, and it involves mutual discussion with Jackson Township, that they won't try to take that lead or that idea or that business and plug it in someplace else in Jackson Township. Not saying that they would, but we wanted to have that in the agreement. Both counties agree not to aid businesses in relocating between either jurisdiction outside of the area. Both parties agree not to incentivize businesses to move into each other's jurisdiction outside of this area. That's pretty big. And we recognize that that's, you know, in most part, probably a one-way street. It's not Jackson Township businesses moving into North Canton. Not that they wouldn't want to, because we know from the marketing, as recently as the last Costco, that it's Costco North Canton, you know? Kane's Chicken has North Canton on the building. They get the North Canton branding. They want to be a part of this community. So it's not that they wouldn't move here, it's just there's no land. There's no availability for some of these places to move in. So we recognize that it could be more of North Canton businesses wanting to expand and move out to somewhere in Jackson Township. We just don't think it's appropriate to incentivize that if we're going to do this agreement. Parties agree to a mutual nondisclosure agreement relating to any potential development opportunities brought by either party until both parties have agreed to make public announcement or as otherwise required by law. So it's very important with these developments and economic development that you're able to put all the terms of the deal together before somebody else finds out about it in this respect. Let's say we're working on something, a deal that we want to put together, and, you know, they're all government officials, and we mentioned something, and then that person talks to somebody from City of Canton, Canton Township. And they're just as hungry for jobs too. And what if they then, because of the information that they learn, went to that business and tried to recruit them to go directly someplace else? It's counterproductive. So the nondisclosure agreement requires us to work in confidence, confidentiality with each other. Both North Canton and Jackson agree to discuss any economic development incentives that may be requested or required for a development opportunity. And Jackson is a willing partner in this. And, you know, it's important, when you look at the growth going on in the county, you know, outside of the big development, like, say, Amazon out there on 62, most of the development that's going on in this county is in Jackson Township. It is one of the biggest subdivisions in Ohio, and it's certainly, you know, one of the most important, if not the most important, in Stark County. And they understand development, and they understand what it takes to get it here, and they're willing to partner with us in that respect. North Canton will have final approval on any income tax incentive, and Jackson will have final approval on any property tax incentive. Regardless of the legal authority to do so, North Canton shall not enact any waiver, reduction, or modification of property taxes without the prior consent of Jackson Township. Opportunities for any state, federal, or private grant to be used within the area shall be collaboratively applied for. That's the boiler of 20 pages of legal jargon. And I would say that as we have deliberations to discuss this, there'll be a public hearing set. That's what you all will do, is set a public hearing date, which has been mutually agreed to with Jackson Township. And Ben, when is that?
October 17th at 5:00 p.m. at Jackson Township Hall.
So October 17th at 5:00 p.m. at Jackson Township Hall will be the public hearing for this shared development agreement. Want to sit down to take your questions from council or any other comments from council? Patrick, you want to return to your seat? Does the pointer reach as far as the screen?
It does.
Right.
We have some questions for Patrick. Let me start with Mr. Matheny.
I don't at this time. I think what we're doing here is extremely important when it comes to development and collaboration with our neighbors on a mutually agreeable program. I think it's a win-win. That area's been laying vacant for as long as I've lived here. So it's time to develop that. And as I say, there's some bulldozer-ready properties down there right now that could provide significant resources to communities, plural. Okay. Christine?
Strong work, Darryl and Patrick. Thank you.
Thank you.
This was a pretty heavy lift. And, you know, I think, you know, part of the challenge out here is everybody can agree to kind of what they want to do, but the trick is to try to get your arms around where you're going to have little hiccups or the friction points, as I say. And I think Patrick and the team have done a very good job addressing those. And I'm sure that as this thing unfolds, we may have an instance or two where we're going to have to really, really collaborate, but I think it'll get done. It's great. Jamie?
Yeah, I think this is a pretty fantastic and certainly mutually beneficial agreement. Like Mr. Matheny said, I think some of this property has been vacant, well, I mean, for as long as I can remember, you know, it certainly is going to give us some opportunity to make some good use of that property. So I think this is a great, great agreement, and I applaud both you gentlemen for getting it together.
Stephanie?
The same thoughts, just it's nice to say it's be proactive. We've seen other entities involved in different collaborations that have worked, and I like it. We're kind of not thinking old school and like, hey, maybe it didn't work before, and do we want to do anything again? And we're not doing that. We are moving forward.
Next.
Very well planned, strong work, and I view this as a stepping stone for other opportunities.
John?
I agree with everything it said. On Wise, as we're going north, is Plain Township involved in any of those properties? I think we have a little bit.
Good, great question. So if you were leaving this facility and heading west towards Jackson, and you got to Wise Avenue, there's a four-way stop there, and then if you turned right, heading north, you'd go, you'd see Edie's Fish House there? And so right before you get to Edie's, Plain Township starts on that east side of the road, on your right-hand side. And then that goes, continues north all the way to Portage is Plain Township. So like where Anastasiades, Chocolates is, that's Plain Township, and a few other businesses over there. On the west side of the street, your left side, that's Jackson Township. So on the backside of that Wise Avenue where I just indicated was plain, those backyards of those businesses, but backyards of residences, those residences are in North Canton.
Thank you. Again, I think Patrick has made a number of points, and I think it's truly critical to emphasize that as we look at development, redevelopment in this particular zone, as Patrick indicated, the city has development criteria. We have 10 key items that we look at. We're looking at job density, we're looking at capital investment, and those are kind of the guiding principles as we move forward on particularly on large-scale projects. I think the second, and as Patrick alluded again, we've demonstrated at Meyer and also at Debold, that we can move projects quickly. And in the development world, that is a terrific asset to have, to be able to move, to move with certainty on a project so it doesn't get hung up and cost the developer additional funds. We've demonstrated the ability to move those things along, particularly with our collaboration with SafeBill. And I think the other thing is this, is that we look at some projects, and there are obviously references to income tax incentive, we have some property tax incentives, is that the city has a complete tool of economic development assistance. Townships don't. They basically have tax evasion. We can do some other things. And again, this is something that can help move a project from concept to deal and done. And that's what we want. Concept, deal, done. So, Mayor, you're the last guy. This is yours.
Thank you very much, Darryl. When I challenged Mr. DiOrio to start thinking about how we can work with another political entity such as Jackson Township, and the acquisition of the land that we have now over by Whipple and Wise Avenue, I thought this would be a good tool for us as we position ourselves for the future. And I think that's what we're doing at this point, is how we're not only looking at something that we can develop now, but something that's going to be beneficial to our community for years to come. And so I felt that this was an avenue for us to position ourselves for the future in another shape or form for economic development. So I appreciate your comments tonight. I appreciate the... I appreciate the months of work and working with Jackson Township. They are very open to our discussion, and I think that's a step in the right direction that, as for myself, I've said before, I'm not letting school colors separate us, okay? Let's work together on how we can best benefit both communities in one way, shape, or form. And I think this is one way that we're, our shared development agreement is a step towards the right direction for positioning ourselves for the future. Thank you.
Mayor, just don't wear anything.
Excuse me?
Just don't wear anything. All right. Any other questions or comments? We'll obviously be revisiting this in the weeks ahead. The first thing I'd like to do is make a motion and call for a second to move this item to 3A, item 3A to the council agenda.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Very good. I'd like a motion and a second to set a public hearing for item 3A on October 17th, 2023, at 5:00 p.m. to be held jointly with Jackson Township at the Jackson Township Hall. So we have the time, the date, and the location and purpose. It's been moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Please for seconds, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And finally, I'd like a motion and a second to post, propose, or to postpone any further consideration of item 3A until after the October 17th public hearing.
It's a joint move.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, sir.
All right. Moving on to Parks and Recreation, Christina?
So essentially, what we're doing here is taking things out of law that probably shouldn't have been law to begin with, and to let the administration kind of direct how rental of parks and recreation work. Patrick, do you have anything to add on that?
Yes, Madam Chair, thank you for that opportunity to speak. Yes, so this is, you know, a further refinement of this recreational facilities, policies, and procedures. And we think that, you know, much of the stuff that is, you know, being stricken from this Section 959 is stuff that really shouldn't have been in there to begin with. So, you know, a refund policy, we have a refund policy. I think it's a refund policy that should be prescribed by law. We have various other terms in there regarding the types of established venues that could be used for different types of activities. Again, looking to put that in under administrative policy is really what it should be under. And then I think, you know, the one thing right at the beginning was a couple of years ago, maybe four or five years ago now, these changes in the rental rates, you know, it was prescribed to have to come back to council and publicly announce them here before, two weeks before they go into effect. And if we just, I guess, just played that by the rule, I don't think it would get much circulation outside of this room. So I think it's much better to just post it to the website so that it can get out to a larger number of people. Certainly will keep council in the loop as to what we're doing, but I just think it would help to clean it up. So mostly cosmetic changes, but.
Anyone else have anything to add about this, any questions?
I do like the fact that the administration's going to take care of establishing the rental rates. They're certainly the ones that are responsible for making sure that those rates and the maintenance and the things that need to take place in our parks are taken care of. The survey we'll get into later shows that communication on the website is one that's increasing. And I don't think city council needs to be making the announcement. Our bulletin goes out three times a year, four times a year, Ben? Our newsletter?
The newsletter goes out four times a year. The bulletin goes out every week after council.
Right. So there's ways to communicate that and getting that done. My concern lies in 959.04, which is future capital improvements. And I know that we have an agreement set up with the Y for the pool, that there's funds set aside for capital improvements. As city council's involved, I wonder if we should maintain that in there, that these rental rates, some of those dollars are set aside. I don't know if Ms. Alavek has, what funds have ever been set aside? Because currently it states up to 10%, and it's probably not enough to cover any future capital improvements that we would have. But I think if we're collecting rental rates and collecting from people utilizing those facilities, we'd have capital funds set aside. Thoughts? I mean, that's just where I'm coming from off what we read.
You're working with a bona fide finance director, which we now have, makes a big difference. But discussing that, no funds have ever been set aside because it's not permissible to do so. So I understand that the funds that come in, they go back into the general fund.
For general rentals, not the dogwood pool?
Yeah, not the dogwood pool, but she's talking about ref rentals.
Right. I thought this would follow the same pattern, so that's interesting to know. Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else?
Makes sense.
Okay. So I'll make a motion to move item 4A to the council agenda. Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, that's all.
Okay, I will make a motion to adjourn the committee meeting.
So moved.
Second?
Aye.
Opposed? Adjourned. We'll take a short break, and then we will resume with the regular meeting. Tom?
Thanks for helping the pool.
What next?
I read another article.
Jeff, it sounds interesting, but isn't awful? It's actually a little weird how it's Plain Township on one side and northeast Jackson on the other.
Do you know North Canton really is Plain Township?
Right, but if there's distinguishing, it's not North Canton, it's Plain Township.
It's just that one tiny little part.
Right, but if you're trying to, like, if they're really going to develop it, I want to know who's going to do the roads.
They are. Jackson's doing the roads.
But are the, is that part of, but if it's Wise Avenue, is that also plain having to work with Jackson? Who's the road?
That's between plain and Jackson. Jackson is responsible for all the roads, and that North Canton will not be.
Because I got to say, Meyer is going to be a mess.
Well, you mean on Meyer?
Yeah.
That has nothing to do with them or that, so.
Like, how much plan was done for the traffic for that?
About as much as the schools.
So and the strip, like, now the strip is, all they're doing, all these extra leggings for the strips.
They are.
Show it as photograph that was here. So I kind of question, like, sometimes I don't think there's really a good follow to in thinking, okay, if this is, if these businesses are actually going to happen, do we have infrastructure to handle this or not?
We do, because the roads are already there that are going to be there. If you look, go down and look at the land that they have aside, the roads are already there.
Yeah, well, I haven't even know, I just feel as though it's.
I know that because, see, that was Bloom's property down there, and the Marshians, my grandpa's farm was there where Speedway was. That was all, that's my family.
Yeah, I don't see what they're going to put down, and that's the only thing I, what you're going to have down there.
Oh, there's all that land that's to be developed there.
Oh, I know, but I can't envision in my head. I drive faster than time.
I like the fact that we have a say in what goes in there. Like you said, a warehouse isn't going to do us any good as far as revenue. Now, this is just for new ones, so once they're there already, they can't do anything. You can't tell those people you're going to pay city income tax now, you know? No, I like it. I really do. I like it.
I don't have a thing, I'm just, I'm cautiously optimistic, let's put it that way.
The only thing was, I was under the understanding that we would provide the fire for that, but we're not, so. But it doesn't matter, they need our help. We can't call across the railroad track side. We cannot go across railroad tracks and sweep across that land to focus north east and south. So we can't cross over.
Actually, I was going to have North Canton address. I live right next to ours, which doesn't make sense.
It's weird. The boundaries and everything are very weird.
Well, either I can go up Marcus, Mark, or whatever that road is. Yes, like if you go from East Mayfield to that road, if you go up there, you're in North Canton. But once you reach a certain point, you're in plain. Or like, I could ride my bike behind Speedway, one minute I'm in North Canton, next minute I'm in plain.
Well, there's one little section there, right off of East Mayfield Street.
Call order, City Council meeting at September 11th, 2023. Time is 7:43 p.m. Opening prayer, Jamie?
Let us pray. Twenty-two years ago, this nation was shaken by a terrible attack at the hands of those who knew only evil. Twenty-two years ago, we lost 2,977 brothers and sisters, mothers and fathers, grandmothers and grandfathers, friends and neighbors. Of the 2,977 victims, we also remember the 343 firefighters and 71 law enforcement officers who ran in and sought only to protect and save, but paid the ultimate price that day. We also want to remember the countless others who have died since the 9/11 attack due to lingering illness and disease stemming from that day. Dear Lord, may all of us remember with love and compassion this day. May we grieve with those who still mourn and share memories with those who cannot forget. May we draw strength from those who bravely responded and gave their lives to save others. May we stand with strangers who became neighbors that day and remember their generosity and hospitality. Above all, God, may we remember your faithfulness and learn to trust in your unfailing love. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation in America, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
That's it. Members, please call the roll.
Member Matheny?
Here.
Member Wyre?
Here.
Member McLeish?
Here.
Member Waring?
Here.
Member Holt?
Here.
And member Or?
Here.
Is that a brother?
All right, thank you, Ben. Okay. Kind of a motion and a second to approve as presented minutes from August 21st Committee, August 21st Council, August 28th Council, and the August 2023 financial report.
Revolt moves.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay. At this time, we're going to have a special presentation from Ben Young, our public policy analyst, and it's going to be a presentation about the community survey.
Thank you. Before I begin, I would be remiss if I did not mention the wonderful team of people that helped work on this project. In fact, if you all look at the report at your seats, you'll note that I am not the lead author, but Liam is.
Thanks, Liam.
He was aided by our incredible summer intern, Zach Buckler. And then although her name does not appear on the report because she left before we started writing, I must also mention Ginny Greer. She helped with tabulation of reports. So as I go through tonight, I want to see my screen so I know what's coming next, but Liam will try his best to be my Vanna White and point out what I'm talking about. So for 2023, we actually had our lowest response rate ever, which was fascinating, given that we sent the survey to more households than ever. So we sent the survey to 12,000 known addresses, where previously we had only sent it to 7,000 known addresses. But what we also saw this year is that for the first time ever, online responses outpaced paper responses. So that may be an indication that how our community wants to interact with us is changing. Regardless, we still have a very acceptable 3% margin of error on any statistic you'll see here tonight or read in the report. And another demographic we asked is about whether they own a home. Traditionally, it has been more than 90% homeowners. We did do slightly better reaching renters this year. We got homeowners down to 87. That is still nowhere close to the 40% renters that we know exists from our rental registration program. So we're still struggling to read that. Other demographics, first by area of the city, it was a pretty even spread, except for some reason this year, the northeast quarter just really wanted to fill out the survey and outpaced everybody else by 10%. And then by age, we had our traditional results of oversampling older populations 55 and over. This has been a trend on every community survey that the city has done since 2009. I'll expand upon that a little bit more here. So these green lines, which unfortunately are not showing up very well, are our census age breakdown. So for our perfect survey sample, we would want something roughly within these lines. However, our surveys over the years have almost always oversampled from the older ends. So the dark green line that appeared is the most recent census, and then the light gray lines are previous surveys, and the dark orange line is this year's survey. As you can see, that is offset by drastically undersampling people on the upper age of the spectrum. This has been a recurring issue. What it means is that, as you'll see in the written report, paying attention to differences in answers by age is very important because the sampling data may have skewed what the overall result was. So city overview, how did, how did the community rate us as a whole? So first is, our first question is quality of life. We got the highest better rating ever for quality of life. So that means 45% of the community told us that they feel life is getting better. That was mostly taken from the same category, so that had roughly a same drop down to 34. But then we also did see worse increase a lot. What you'll notice going, as we go through on all the results tonight, is that no opinion will generally decrease across all our results, which means that both good responses and negative responses increase. What this tells Liam and I is that our community is better informed about what we're doing, which will be borne out in some other results we'll talk about in just a minute. A question related to the quality of life question, the next question always asked on the survey is, are you happy with the direction you identified for quality of life? 60% of respondents said that they were happy with the direction they identified. 22% said they were displeased.
22%?
Said they were displeased with the direction they identified. So that means that presumably all 15% of the people who said life is getting worse are displeased, plus another 7%. Next, we asked respondents about their perceived value for taxes. This was relatively flat, within historic norms, within the margin of error of the last two years, responses pretty much stable. What I feel is perhaps the most important question is the stay for five years. So do you like the community enough that you intend to stay here for the next five years? And overall, yes. 80% of respondents said that they intend to stay here for the next five years. That was generally, that increase was offset by a decrease in baby responses. That was generally, that increase was offset by a decrease in baby responses. What we did see when looking at it by age is very similar to what we saw in twenty twenty-one. If by the age of thirty-five, we can convince you to stay, you will stay for the rest of your life. But if you're under the age of thirty-five, you're much less sure whether or not you wanna stay. So that implies that there's a challenge for us to show younger generations that there is opportunity here in North Canton and Starnd County. The bulk of the survey every single year is we ask residents to rate a whole bunch of city surveys, whether they're doing a good job, a fair job, an okay job, a poor job, or they don't have an opinion. Instead of going through all fifteen of those tonight, we're just gonna look at the composite rating for all of those city services. Of course, if you want to go through all fifteen, it will be available in the final report. Our composite rating is effectively flat from last year. Pretty much all the changes are within the margin of error, implies people like us. What I will say from looking at the individual ratings of services is that a few services saw sharp decreases. Traffic enforcement and trash collection being the top two. Those two sharp decreases were generally offset by increases across the other services, which resulted in a flat overall. Our next big category is public information. As you all know, since twenty nineteen, when the city had its lowest effective communication rating ever, we have been putting in a lot of effort to try and get better at informing the public. And it appears that our efforts have been paid off. So we got our highest effective communication rating ever at fifty-four percent. Still below the sixty percent I'm hoping to hit one day, but a great strong eight percent increase from twenty twenty-one and returning to above fifty percent.
What are your favorite stats, Dan?
Most of the reforms we've made are through how our website looks, functions, how easy it is to subscribe. You can get text messages, email updates, all for free. So we do ask about website usage. And overall, we're still where we were last time. So about half the population has used the website, but of that half, they overwhelmingly find it easy. What is interesting again is to look at it by age. So younger generations are more likely to have used our website and find it helpful. And older generations are less likely to have used the website in the first place. So that goes to how important the newsletter that Administrator Diorio spearheaded Getting Restarted that goes out in paper form, it's available at the counter outside if anybody needs one, is at reaching the entirety of the city. We can't just rely on the computer to reach it. That's also borne out by the preferred methods of communication. Those of you who were here for the last survey cycle in twenty-one, this chart should look very familiar as it's almost identical to what it was in twenty twenty-one, where older generations overwhelmingly prefer a paper newsletter and younger generations are looking for a mix. They're looking for some posts on social media, some emails, they'll take a newsletter. And this just further reinforces that to be effective at communicating, we have to continue to use a wide mix and variety of methods. So that's the end of the standard questions that we ask every single year. We track over time. It's what would be called a longitudinal study. And the next two sections we're gonna get into are the policy questions. So every year on the survey, roughly the back half of the paper is reserved for policy questions. Things that, major projects, major initiatives that we're currently considering that we want public feedback on. So our first policy priority area was parks. We asked about this the previous two cycles as well. It's part of what has led us to acquire land for community athletic fields, for Caffrey Park, to try and find a place for a dog park. And so with Caffrey Park in mind, we asked residents once again what amenities they feel are needed most in our parks. And the top six were walking paths, natural areas, benches and tables, splash pads, dog parks, and water features. So that's across all age groups. What's interesting about looking at these top six is that playgrounds and pickleball courts have fallen off, which Liam and I would attribute to putting in the new pickleball courts at Arrowhead, kind of filled that need, and then building the beautiful new playground at Dogwood Park, kind of filled that need. So we've addressed it, so it changed what we're looking for. Again, just like last year, we looked at this stratified by age group because parks, much more than some of the other city services that we provide, tend to vary across age groups. So what I mean by that is, we all want the police to show up when we call nine-one-one. We don't, no age group has a different expectation of that. But as we get older, we have kids, we might care more about a playground, we might care more about a dog park than when we're young and we've aged out of a playground, but maybe we want somewhere to go walk and play Pokemon Go when we're in college. So looking at this by age group, we can see that it's very similar to twenty twenty-one's with the exception that, again, as I discussed, pickleball and playgrounds have essentially fallen off the chart. But there are four, what this shows us and what the color coding shows is there are sort of four key priorities shared across all the age groups. So green is, people want natural air, they want green space to enjoy. Blue is they want places to play with their children or pets, so dog parks, black pets. Gray is walking paths, they just want a place to have a nice walk, get some exercise in. And then the sort of tan color is places to just sit down and enjoy what's happening in the park room. Those go, many of these things, natural areas, walking paths, benches and tables, go kind of perfectly hand in hand with each other, and we can probably develop simultaneously. We, parks was one of the services rated, I'm looking at parks overall. Given the large capital investment we've had in the last two years, we expected and we saw as expected a strong increase in the parks rating of eight percent, a good rating. However, parks are not free. And so one of the questions that we were asked to put on the survey this year was, would the residents support a parks levy? And if so, what amount would they be willing to contribute? And kind of fascinatingly, the results fell pretty perfectly into thirds. So about a third of the community said that they would not support a parks levy. Another third said that they would give twenty-five dollars or some dollar amount less than that. Overwhelmingly, most common was twenty-five. And then about another third said some value over twenty-five. This typically ranged from fifty all the way to, we had two people say five hundred. We'd love to see them. So put together, it shows that approximately two-thirds of the community is likely to support a parks levy. But there is some disagreement about what level of funding that would be. Our next policy priority was economic development. We asked quite a few pointed questions about economic development because the phone calls we get, both in council's office and administration, very frequently are about the perception that Main Street is underdeveloped, that it is vacant, that there are places in need of help. So we wanted to sort of test if that was true. Because as far as we could count, Patrick Correct, there were five vacant properties left.
There were five and we owned three of them.
There were five and we owned three. So we wanted to try and get to the root of why is there that perception in the community that Main Street is struggling? And the data really points that Main Street isn't struggling. So across all age groups, more than fifty percent of respondents said that they visit Main Street on a weekly basis. They patronize a business on Main Street at least once a week. More than fifty percent in every single age group. Sixty percent or more in every age group said they go at least once. So it would appear that the vast majority of the community is frequently patronizing businesses on Main Street, frequently traveling to Main Street, frequently doing that. So as we'll get to in just a minute, our hypothesis is that there are two possibilities to explain why there's a perception vacancy. First is that what is on Main Street is not what the community is currently looking for. And the second is that the Hoover Building, right in the center of town, is big and it's empty, and people just sort of see that and then make an assumption that the rest of Main Street is also vacant. So we'll start with the first one about, is Main Street what people want? Or is something missing on Main Street that would get more people to want it? So we asked residents to rate a bunch of development categories on, if you could spend ten dollars on these types of development, where would you put your money? And so we had retail, parking, restaurants, outdoor dining, housing, nightlife, indoor entertainment, so that'd be arcades, bowling, that sort of thing. Or we called it outdoor recreation slash parks. It would appear that most survey takers interpreted that as a park. Asking the question this way gave us incredible data that breaks out into three measures here that I've shown with the thick black lines. So the first two rows show us overall support in the community. So this is just the raw number of points that that type of development received. Parks had a pretty strong lead at about nineteen percent of points. Restaurants were pretty close with eighteen percent, but then the next closest thing drops another three percent down to retail at fifteen. So we have two pretty strong leaders, restaurants and parks. Parks, we know the community wants more development in parks, that's why we asked a whole bunch of questions about them. We have plans for Caffrey, for a dog park, for community recreation field. So we know that desire exists and we're attempting to address it. Restaurants are more complicated. As we'll talk about on the next slide, restaurants typically desire liquor permits. And we have two limitations on our liquor permits that can make it hard to attract restaurants other than fast food chains that don't need a liquor permit. Sit-down, full-service restaurants typically want liquor permits. The next row, the middle row, tells us how deeply respondents supported what they identified. So the first two rows just sort of tell us the community overall supports parks and restaurants. This next row tells us how strongly do they feel that they want parks and restaurants? And again, we see parks and restaurants pull ahead quite significantly, receiving an average of one point seven five and one point six five points per person who took the survey for those development types. Now, I'm just gonna round that up to two points. Considering that they only had ten points to give, that means the average person was putting two fifths of all the points they had available into parks and restaurants.
What do you consider outdoor dining?
Why do we need parks? We have them.
Any restaurant that has like a patio to eat on, rows, grinders.
So then?
How about?
Other? The next two rows then tell us how broad the support is, right? So the first row tells us overall how they do, and then the next row tells us how deeply did the people who picked that care. But it could be that, you know, twenty-five percent of people put all ten points into parks, and that's what drove it up. So these next two rows show us whether or not there is majority support across survey takers for this. And it actually switches here that restaurants take the lead with fifty-two percent of respondents saying they want more restaurants, and only fifty percent saying they wanted more parks. And when you look at how broad the support is, retail gets a lot closer to being equal with the top two. No matter which way you look at it, parking was the lowest response, which implies that people are not currently upset about the availability or access of parks. So that sort of answers hypothesis one, that it appears when people are looking for a restaurant. So then hypothesis two had to deal with the Hoover District and its perception of it. As we talked about in the newsletter, we asked a question about tearing down the Hoover District because particularly if you visit the rear side of the structure, there are significant structural issues with the builds. And so we are potentially concerned that it is not salvageable simply because the developer has unfortunately left large holes in both the roof and the walls, and the building has been exposed to the elements for a decade or more. But we recognize that this building is an important historic piece of the city, of the building, and it was for a very long time the heart of the city. So instead of just immediately barreling ahead with attempting to condemn the structure, we wanted to get the public's opinion about whether they would prefer that we do everything we can to try and encourage the developer, or whether the community was at a point where they just wanted it gone because we've been disappointed for too long. Fifty-two percent said no. They do not want it demolished, they'd rather that it be saved if possible. So that sort of gives us a guiding light that if we can, we can attempt to work with the developers, although we have had struggles. But this response also implies, at least to Liam and I, that the vacancy of the Hoover Building is a large part of what is feeding into that perception of a vacant main street. Because it is such a large building and it is at the heart of our community, and we have such hopes that the plans that were put forward will come true, that frustration of building in the community about it still being empty. Now, on the last slide, I said we get back to talking about alcohol. So we, as I said earlier, we have two limitations on liquor permits in the city. First is our population cap. So in the state of Ohio, the number of liquor permits in a jurisdiction is capped by the number of people that live in that jurisdiction. For us, it's one permit for every two thousand people, so that means that we have nine permits of each type. C, or not C permits, but D, three, four, and five. D five is everything, D four is only beer, D five is wine and spirits. We are already out of D three and four permits. There are none available to be had in the city. We have, I believe it's four D five permits left. Papa Bear's Restaurant intends to take one, so that gets us to three. That means that despite having three miles of Main Street, we can only put three more restaurants with a liquor license on that street. It is very limiting. Now, the second limiting factor is that unlike some surrounding townships, way back in the nineteen twenties, when prohibition was lifted, or early nineteen thirties, sorry, when prohibition was lifted, each locality got to choose whether it wanted to remain dry or wet. when prohibition was lifted, each locality got to choose whether it wanted to remain dry or wet. North Canton chose to remain dry. What that means is that anybody who wants a liquor permit today must go to a vote of the public before getting that liquor permit. So let's put that in the perception of, let's say, an Applebee's franchise is gonna wanna have a box. I'm the investor, I'm looking to open an Applebee's. I can either open it in North Canton or a surrounding township, assuming both have a liquor permit available. If I locate in North Canton, I have to first buy the property, then take a risk of going to the ballot on whether or not I'll get my permit, hopefully get my permit, and then open my restaurant. In a surrounding township, I can just open a restaurant and apply for a liquor permit without having to go to the ballot. So we asked the public how they felt about this dry limitation, particularly because a lot of the people that we had talked, spoken to, didn't know that North Canton was dry. A response we frequently heard was, there are two state liquor agencies in the city, what do you mean we're dry? And so it was pretty close. Fifty-one percent said that they would be interested in lifting the dry designation. Thirty-seven percent said no, and twelve had no opinion. So it looks like there may be some support for lifting the dry designation, which might help make opening a restaurant in town more desirable. It's something I'd kind of like to look into more, might require some better public education before asking again. As my final note, as always, there was an option to leave free-form comments. It is very difficult to summarize free-form comments. So if you are interested in those, I would encourage you to go look for yourself. On our website, there is a lovely portal that makes the Word Cloud. You can see here, if you click on a word in the Word Cloud, it highlights all of those comments that have that word in it. Liam's, well, Liam and I have read every single one, and he's welcome to correct me, but my perception is that the two main themes were about the Hoover District and traffic enforcement. Were the most common comments we've said. The Hoover District and traffic enforcement. But, so those comments are available at northcantohio.gov/survey. That is all I have. I would be happy to take questions. This PowerPoint, the final report, and a full data readout will be available on our website at northcantohio.gov tomorrow morning. Northcantohio.gov/survey.
Question.
Great job, everybody involved. That's a lot of data.
Question, what do you think people think Main Street is? So we weren't specific, you weren't like from this point to this point.
No, we were not, we did not limit the geographic area. So it is, it is subject to whatever people believe Main Street is.
Right.
I know there is among some a misconception that North Canton ends at Everhard, since that's sort of where it transitions from business to residential as you head into Canton.
Yeah, and I think that's kind of, and maybe that's why there's some just difference in surveys. I think, I mean, even for me, when I think of like Main Street or that main area, I don't take it all the way up to Marx. You know, I understand that that's Cleveland Avenue, but for me, that doesn't seem like our town's center. And so, you know, like if I said, if I frequented then and I counted all that, yes, it'd be a lot more times. But if I'm counting this kind of main central area, probably not as much. And so I think that's when you get those very differing viewpoints. And then that would coincide, I think, with your Hoover Building, this seeming it's vacant. Because if you're only saying going from Elver Cone to, I don't even know what business, you know, would you say the chiropractor, which I think is far out? Yeah, maybe is that even too far? You know, so I think that's, it'd be interesting to almost bring that down or to say like, what do you consider Main Street is? Or where do you consider that Main Street focus should be? But I love the data and the distinguishing. And we do a lot of reports for my work and I love the five-year data. That's so fascinating and I think that's good for our whole region to really note. And this tracks with what our star county is doing. So I love seeing that number. And then the number one thing for me was the communication. Because I remember so many years where that was a constant, constant, not transparent, you don't communicate, how do we do it? And we're like, it's on your electric bill, what, that's not enough? And so to see this is, is great. So, thank you.
Yeah, I just want to throw out that my first experience working with the city was a, being a mayoral appointee to the, I believe it was the 2012 survey. And I was the one who suggested that we should do online responses for people. And granted, we only had a hundred and seventy. And we were learning and believe me, those hundred and seventy and tabulating, that was exciting. But I'm excited to see that line go up.
Jamie, were we tearing off papers at that point?
We might have been, so.
Oh, gosh.
No, great job. And great job.
Yeah, shoeboxes.
Oh, geez. Anyone else?
All right, moving on, we will have recognition of public seats. Tonight's public seats is gonna be agenda items only, so there's only two items on this agenda tonight. At this time, members of the public wishing to address the council may do so. Each speaker will give him five minutes. Comments shall be limited to legislative items appearing on tonight's agenda. The rules for speaking and the speaker's time will appear on both screens. This will serve as the only warning for everyone in attendance. Any violation of the rules will result in objection from the premises. Anyone wishing to address council tonight, please approach the podium.
I just have a question, where is Caplia Park?
Can you identify yourself?
Yeah.
My name is Cindy Rizalotti.
So we'll answer you after, just a process afterwards, we'll discuss where that is. Anyone else wanting to address council?
Quick question.
Yep.
So we can't discuss the survey?
I don't see why the survey would be. Would we agree with that since it is on the agenda?
It is not in the legislative portion, but if you would like to suspend the rules.
I'll vote to suspend rules to allow, or I will make a motion to talk about the survey as well. If we would like to approve that, that's my honest.
Second.
All favor?
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, yep.
Matt Roher, R-O-H-R, B-A-U-G-H, two seventeen Hallam Southwest. I'm kind of winging this, just because on that survey, so it's my first time doing this, I'll try my best to stay in the five minutes. But kind of like to address Stephanie's thing and I'm thinking about how it went. One, we've got a survey, you said you saw twelve thousand, we got about eight hundred people. Their respondents were basing this off of that. But two, this Main Street, yeah, it's easy to say you go to one place because like Stephanie asked, you could go anywhere, you could go to Walgreens, you could go to Acme. I have spoke to Matt when he first ran, we didn't get into detail, whenever did me ever get into detail, some ideas that I had, they might be a little extreme. But I've born and raised here, been living here since nineteen sixty-eight. I did leave for twenty-five years living in Medina County. If anybody's ever been to Medina or Wadsworth, you can see they're pretty bustling around their square. So my point where I've been, and oh, also I should have thrown in, some of you may have heard, I run a little Facebook group called Speak Freely in North Canton, where I tend to speak freely. Anyway, what I was getting at is the Main Street thing. So Stephanie's talking about the Main Street. I have been repeatedly voicing, basically from maybe about Hall, is it Hall? Where Duke used to be? From there to, and I live at the south end, so I would say essentially just about the Wagner's, Hallum, maybe a little bit farther, it's dead. Yes, there's businesses there, they're one-stop shop and go. There's no reason for everybody to get out and walk. Now we have a one-point-five million dollar new sidewalk on Wyse to get people to walk uptown. I've been walking, I walked uptown a lot when I was a kid. I used to go to Hummel's, Granny's, Maxi's, there's nowhere to go, not even for these kids. You know, those were businesses, but you know, kids used to hang out at Burger Chef. Kids used to hang out at Maxi's, Granny's. You had two arcades above Apple Grove. Nobody's gonna send their kid on pedestrian to walk across Apple Grove anymore if there's anything up there. There's no entertainment for kids to walk to. I understood by the Mr. Stroya's comments about the walkway, it was to build infrastructure. But is it gonna, it's not, there's nowhere to walk to uptown, you know? Yeah, go for the walk, you got the health walkers, they're already walking all over town. I have a street with no sidewalks, it probably has more walkers and a very wide sidewalk that's two blocks away from me. Anyway, I'm sorry, I'm just kind of pulling things out. But there's those businesses from, basically that strip I said, it's one-stop shop. And the south end of town, that's, you know, we used to have a super-duper where Sir Troy's, that was a grocery store years ago, for those that haven't been around that long. All we got is Walgreens and speedy foods. We don't have any, it's like, yeah, you know, we keep throwing it up there, throwing it up there. And I know Medina kind of did the same thing, but also then they went and said, hey, wait a minute, let's look at this historic square. We've got these buildings and they've got all kinds of different little shops that keep going. As soon as one's gone, another one's in there. Or food, drink, et cetera. And I understand what you're saying about the liquor licenses, that can make a difference. I was also told that the door was to try to draw more things. Where are you gonna put them? You got two churches, a Y, three churches, three churches, a Y in that strip, where are you gonna put anything? I know this is gonna sound extreme, but have a conversation with the churches about relocating off of Main. I know they've been there forever, it would change the whole view, it would be a whole new city. But just some thoughts, things, ideas that have come out of mine. But, because we still show on the Dora map that there's liquor licenses at Hoover's, that we just said it's got a hole in the roof and a hole in the building. So how good are those liquor licenses doing that are counted into the Dora? But I just wanted to address that, that's why I think Mr. Stroya's always shaking my head and laughing. My personal view, and I think a lot of other people that may have, well, it makes you, yeah, they make a stop on Main Street, there's nothing to draw you to come up there to walk once you take a walk along this new walkway that we have. Thank you.
Is anybody allowed to speak?
About the survey, sure.
No.
No.
About this town, this jewel, the town that has.
We're talking about the survey and we're talking legislative.
And I wasn't able to get a hold of any of you to bring this up so I could speak.
What prevented you from getting a hold of anybody?
I made phone calls, everybody's, this is full, that's full. I called the city.
You talked about it before or after, but we're not talking about it right now.
I'm happy to talk again.
Anyone else wishing to address council? All right, last call. Okay, moving on to old business. Ben, would you please read the title of ordinance seventy-two thousand twenty-three?
An ordinance amending chapter seven oh three, registration of rental units of the codified ordinances of the city of North Canton to expand registration requirements to all rental units in the city regardless of building size.
Fair.
Thank you. As the clerk has indicated, this is the second reading. This will expand our rental registration to those units that have, were not included in the first round, units in of eight or less in building. Now we're going to move above that. We estimate there'll be about seventeen hundred, fifteen hundred or so units. Fourteen hundred, thank you. That will be included. Does anyone have any questions or comments at this time? Again, second reading. If not, then I will make a motion to adopt the second reading of ordinance seventy-two thousand twenty-three.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And the minute should reflect that Mr. Stroya has absented himself from the meeting and the vote. Thank you. All right, it's been moved and seconded, you can turn Mr. Yes, so I think we can bring him back.
Yes.
You've been deposed.
All right. Okay. Ben, would you just please read the title of ordinance seventy-six thousand twenty-three?
An ordinance amending chapter one fifty-five personnel regulations, specifically subsection one fifty-five point oh four F, full-time scheduled compensation item administrative specialist of the codified ordinances of the city of North Canton to reclassify the administrative specialist position from hourly to salary in accordance with Federal Fair Labor Standards Act.
David. Okay, so everything stated in the title except for the hourly rate that is currently paid up to thirty-one thirty-five, changing to a salary of up to sixty-five two oh eight. No pay increases involved here, just changing the way it's structured. Questions? Make a motion that we adopt the second reading of ordinance seventy-six two oh two-three. All in favor?
Aye.
Both? Motion carries. Okay, moving on to department reports, Patrick?
No report.
Gina?
I'll report.
Mayor?
I'll use their minutes. Again, thank you, Mr. McLeister, for the part tonight regarding the remembrance of our nine-one-one. In honor of remembrance of that event. Sure, many of us here know exactly where we were when that day occurred. I also want to point out that we had a wonderful opportunity with Walsh University to host the, a U.S. National Security Policy Panel presentation with world leaders. And that was September the fifth at seven o'clock out at the Caccini Center, the university. Just to refresher our audience, General Phil Bredele, who was the seventeenth Supreme Allied Commander of Europe, was there. He served in twenty thirteen to twenty sixteen. Ambassador Francis Campbell, British Ambassador to the Holy See, two thousand and five to twenty-eleven, and Personal Secretary for Prime Minister Francis, or excuse me, Tony Blair, Tony Blair, in two thousand one and two thousand three. And General Todd Walters, W-O-L-T-E-R-S. He was the nineteenth Supreme Allied Commander of Europe. And the moderator was Dr. Joe Wood, Vice President, Dick Cheney's National Security Advisor. And some of the audience here and some council were also there to hear these gentlemen. And this was part of President Collins' thought on leadership series that's being offered at Walsh University. And I was honored to be invited to what was probably the most prestigious event to be hosted in our hometown. The U.S. National Security Policy Panel is an example of what a university should be doing. These dignitaries are learned, were learned individuals who bring a unique perspective, have a lifetime of experience, education, and real-life global experiences. And it was really hard to grasp the enormity of what this one lifetime event. I wanted to thank Dr. Collins, again, President Collins personally, for providing this opportunity for our city, thinking about issues of our time. And for helping the public to be more informed and to better ourselves and for the betterment of our community. And we had about twelve hundred people there, maybe six hundred were students, okay? But the rest of the audience found it very, very interesting that we had this magnitude of leaders, world leaders, in our community for one night. And I just wanted to bring that out to the attention of our community and to the audience and council. Also, I had the opportunity, it seems like the Canton area Down Syndrome community has adopted North Canton for their annual Buddy Walk. And that was just Saturday. And we probably had about two hundred people in attendance. And again, recognize our, our, our men and women and boys and girls who have a Down Syndrome and how they could share their special abilities, you know, for that day. We were able to provide a certificate of appreciation as they, the community, Down Syndrome community purchased a park bench and dogwood park. And they especially enjoyed the Possibility Playground that morning and that day. They're very appreciative of what North Canton has to offer. One final item I'd like to bring the attention to the, to the council and the audience is on, I provided a proclamation and. And it's in regards to the Star Spangled Banner, our national anthem, which was written during the War of eighteen twelve. I'll summarize it to this point, whereas I presented this to the National Society of United Daughters of eighteen twelve and the Madison McKinley Chapter, calling for a day of observance, this historical significance of the Star Spangled Banner, and to celebrate the words of, with Francis Scott Key penned in eighteen fourteen. I'm proclaiming the, and for the City of North Canton, on September the fourteenth, that's Star Spangled Banner Day, encouraging the City of North Canton to support and celebrate the two-hundred-ninth anniversary of the National Anthem of the United States of America. And that will be proclaimed for the fourteenth day of September two thousand and twenty-three by the order of the mayor for the City of North Canton. Something else to think about in this day from Patriots' Day on for the rest of this week. Just wanna thank Mr. Young and his team for the preparation and the hard work and gathering the data and analysis for the two thousand and twenty-three community survey. I believe we learn something every year and from, from that. And hopefully, I think it'll give us some basis for some of the decisions that we make, that we have some analytical data that we can fall back on or use to hopefully for the betterment of city operations and for the betterment of our community. Mr. Stroye, I think that's all I have to say.
All right.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thanks for your time.
Council clerk, huh?
I think I had my time, so I'm not recording.
All right, let's go to council reports. Ward one, Jamie?
I have no report this evening.
Okay. Ward two, David?
So I talk frequently about personnel safety, and it's always great when you receive a letter from a resident, and this one went into the city. And I'll, I'll read some excerpts from this from Mr. Bowers. "I wanted to give accolades to the North Canton Water Department. My granddaughter is a traveling nurse and purchased a home approximately two years ago. It had a well which truly concerned me at the time of the sale. On Thursday, August twenty-fifth, the well collapsed and she had no water at all. I called the North Canton Water Department and the girl was incredibly helpful, and I wish I had her name, but I don't, directing us to what we do in order to get connected to city water. Two men arrived, Gabe Schwali?
Schwali.
Schwali?
Schwali.
Schwali. And Jamie Martin. They were absolutely outstanding at every level, doing everything possible to get her into the system. And Mayor Walder wrote a letter back and told him that Gabe and Jamie who quickly responded to their, to his granddaughter's emergency water situation. It's most rewarding to know that the water department team were able to get her home connected to city water system safe in a timely manner. These employees take great pride in what they do servicing our customers. And that's part of the North Canton strength, are the employees that work every day to bring us the services that we need and rely on in North Canton." That's my report.
All right, thank you. David? Stephanie?
No report.
John?
All right, while walking out throughout the ward, we were able to take care of a couple problems. One was on Salway. We had curbs that were beat up, brush that needed cleaned up.
South of Everhard.
Or, yeah, south of Everhard, okay? So we were able to get that cleaned up. Also, we were able to cut down, not cut down, but clean up on Donner from, you know, was it Glenwood to almost church? We were able to cut down some trees and clean up that area. I also visited, talked to a couple residents with the stop signs that we had to remove on Salway and got some input from them. They seemed to understand a little bit better. I'm gonna be out there this week again, talking to a couple people. Maybe we'll be possibly putting a couple speed tarp's or table on there. Cause it is a long stretch. A lot of people had concerns, there are children in the area. And that hill goes downhill, so. Been talking to the people and going from there. So thank you, Pat and the administration, to do that. They did a real nice job. And that's my report.
All right, thanks, John. Darrell?
No report.
Christina?
Couple things. Thanks Liam and Ben and Patrick and Mayor and Darrell for all of the work that went into the presentations tonight and for the presentations. And then Matt Borbaugh, I think you mentioned Medina and Wadsworth, yeah? So those are both Main Street Ohio communities, which is a program of Heritage Ohio, something that I've looked a lot into. I actually brought someone down who is an economic development urban planner from one of the organizations that was at that conference when I attended it. And we walked Main Street and we have a whole lot of curb cuts. And she was like, this is no good for walking Main Street. So it was really disappointing, cause I was like all in. And I'm still, I've not given up on this dream of North Canton being a Main Street community, but we have some challenges that those communities unfortunately do not have. But I'm with you, I look at what all of those Main Street communities are doing and just that blueprint they have for development, it's brilliant. And all of the communities around here that are doing all the things that we wanna be doing aren't part of that program. So I appreciate you saying that, and I'm with you, and we have a lot of curb cuts. And then all of you who are saying that our voicemails are full, please stay after and talk to us, cause I don't know what that means or how. But I'm very interested to find out, so please stay after.
All right, thank you. My turn. Thank you, Patrick, administration mayor, for, for your work on the annexation project with Jackson. I'm really looking forward to that. Is it being a stepping stone to other things along that street that, or that, along Whipple or wherever else? But what, what a, I think it's, we're underestimating the work that was involved in that, but also the potential for the future on that. That, that's a huge thing that happened. I mean, when's the last time we worked with a cooperative annex? Hasn't, hasn't happened, it's huge. So I'm very much looking forward to that. Ben, Liam, everybody that worked on the survey, the information that you gather from that is, it helps us as a community, helps us look at what you want. And we are able to break down and take that data and get a lot of answers to questions about what's going on from your opinions directly. And that's very helpful. Tonight, on your drive home, if you, if you have a chance, drive down Portage and the luminaries will be out for nine eleven, which there's a gentleman that puts that out and organizes it. And it is, it's, it really, it hurts your soul. I mean, it's, it's amazing, all the work that they put in together, but it's, it's one of the really neat things about our community, that they, they go and put all that stuff together. Yeah, it's, I'm almost in tears thinking about it, but it's, yeah. And Jamie, thank you for your prayer on that, that was very nice. Buy and support local. Final call for new business.
Do you wanna answer Mrs. Rizalotti about Caplia Park?
We'll do that.
Yeah, we'll, we'll talk about it, yeah, yeah. Okay, seeing none, moving on. The meeting's calendar for the committee, the hall is gonna be September eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-three. We'll have to talk about the agenda on that, though. And then September twenty-fifth is the regular city council meeting. I undertake a question for adjourn.
Your vote moves?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And before I adjourn, if you have any questions about Dogwood Bowl and everything, please come to us and ask us. Thank you.